2022 Meeting of the Board of Education to Order. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I accept a motion to approve the agenda presented before us this evening with the addition of Walk-on Resolution Number Four.
So moved, Noelani?
Noelani, second?
Second.
And? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We have our minutes of the May Fourth, 2022 Board of Education presented for approval. May I have a motion to accept these minutes?
So moved, Bernice?
Bernice?
Second, Erica.
Erica? Any additions, corrections, or discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We're now at the time of public comment. I would like to remind people that we are about to convene into the public comment period of our meeting. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need be. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel. Please know, however, that we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. Finally, we recognize that right now, our nation and our community are polarized on a number of issues. That said, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect for any divergent views that others possess. We ask that speakers please address their comments to the board directly rather than the audience. The board will now hear comments from those who've signed up. I have Adam Walker.
Is this on? Okay. So, I came here with some public comments about CRT. They are specifically directed at you, Kathy Lewis, but if that should be an issue at all, I'm sure that one board member's opinions are shared by the other, so I can address the board as a whole. That being said, CRT. A big part of critical race theory is to be truthful about the violence and legal status quo of Black people in America. CRT is not something that was made up recently. It's not something that was just thought about. CRT aims to teach about the history of the United States. According to that history, slavery was a legal institution in the USA from 1776 to 1865. CRT aims to teach just that. So, board, and specifically the comments that Kathy Lewis made against-
I'm sorry, but that's personal.
Yep, the board and the comments of some that said they were against the teaching of CRT. Is it fair to say that by being against the teaching of CRT, you dispute it? You do not believe that it is true? So surely if you are against CRT, you must think it's false. But slavery did happen in the United States from 1776 to 1865. That is American history. It's bloody, but it is American history. So, board, if you dispute CRT, do you dispute that Black people were in fact enslaved? Do you dispute that American history should be taught in school? You might be thinking, why did I ask you that? Well, if you are against CRT, then you must not believe that it is true and thus shouldn't be taught in school. According to a member of the school board, CRT should not be taught in schools. But it is American history. So if it is a lie, if it is incorrect, if CRT is not correct, if it is not American history, then I asked specifically the member, but the entire board, then why don't you tell us what happened between 1776 and 1865 to Black Americans in the United States? Were we able to vote or were we not able to vote? I'll ask again. If you are against CRT being taught in schools, does that mean that you dispute the teaching of American history, which CRT is, in the school? Personally, and with this, I think American history should be taught in schools for all high school kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Next person is Anne Marie Saree.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you want to join me in a couple deep breaths, like most people, it's public speaking. Doesn't matter how few people are there, it's not my forte, but I'm happy to be here tonight. I've been a resident of Schenectady for the past seventeen years. And I believe that the way our schools are managed has a significant impact on the community as a whole, whether we're parents or not. Like many, I'm very concerned with the intense division in our communities, small and large, local, national, and international. And from where I stand, as a humble member of the community who aspires for a society that continues to evolve and better serve all of its members, I'm deeply concerned with how adversarial this situation has become. And especially here locally with the most recent events with the school board, how extreme the retaliation has been for what in the end was an issue that was decided by a fair vote, albeit close, but a vote that some, even though it ended up on their side of the issue, took as a major threat to the status quo, which has been very comfortable for some, myself included if I'm honest, while being much less so for far too many others. The fear mongering and vitriolic attacks against some of the most dedicated members of our community have been deeply alarming to me. And while they delivered the election results the offenders were after, I worry that this trend will lead to worrisome, if not disastrous, consequences. Pushing for and gaining a monolithic and homogeneous control of the power structures in our society may feel like a victory, but in the end, it will lead to decisions that work great for some while at best neglecting or at worst oppressing others. I fear that the support some members of the board enjoyed during this recent short but aggressive campaign will derail into pressure to steer the board into taking more extreme actions that will negatively impact the quality of education and limit the next generation's ability to think freely and create a more just and equitable society for everyone. I sincerely hope that the board, with its new membership configuration, will find ways to productively, collaboratively, to work together, sorry, productively, collaboratively, and with respect. I apologize for my French-Canadian accent. Finally, I would like to acknowledge that the budget we voted for, with, I think it was somewhere close to eighty percent in favor of it yesterday, that budget includes Schenectady's share of the $1.4 billion made possible thanks to the seven-year lawsuit that secured state funding of $4.2 billion over three years. And for that, I would like to personally thank board member Jamaica Miles for her tenacity and dedication in that matter, as she was one of the plaintiffs in that lawsuit.
Time, myself?
Just one last. I also want to sincerely thank her for her passion, for her care, for improving not only our schools, but our society and community at large, to make it work for all of us.
Thank you. Jerian Foster?
Good evening, board. Needed that deep breath. There's just a couple of things I wanted to talk about tonight. I haven't been here over the last couple of weeks for personal reasons. However, I have watched it live. And in the beginning of each meeting, Kathy talks about how we're supposed to be respectful in this space. And the way that I've seen some board members treat other board members is an embarrassment to me. It's an embarrassment to our community. It doesn't reflect what we would like our students, how we would like them to behave. So watching it, it was very disheartening. And watching it week and week again, and kind of the tit for tat and the calling people out, we see you. The people that voted you in see you. And I'm asking for there to be a higher level of professionalism. That is what I'm asking for when it comes to that. So, other things that I came here, I just, that was really, we can't do that. We are role models to these students, to this community. You are elected officials. It reminded me of like Trump. And it's embarrassing watching that, right? Watching people who were voted in act like that. Anyways, though, I also wanted to talk about the critical race theory. Ask our students how they feel about that. Hopefully this time you'll listen. The next thing I wanted to talk about is just, we have different opinions. Everybody has different beliefs on this board. I just wanted to remind everyone, especially with the new people who were just, the new person who was voted in, this is not about your beliefs. It's not about whether you believe in something or not. And I hope that we're making decisions based on that and not our personal beliefs, but the beliefs of the people that you serve. So when we talk to police, we say, who do you protect, who do you serve? And I'm wondering the same thing when I look at this board. Who do you educate? When does equity matter to you? How do you show up in spaces to show that? So that's really all I wanted to say tonight. I hope you guys all have a good night. Thank you.
Lojean? Abidura?
Hi. I am here to address critical race theory as well as the behavior here on the board. On the May Eleventh forum that was held on May Eleventh, a member of the board was asked about their views on critical race theory and if they were endorsed by any groups that oppose CRT. And for those of you watching, I want to give a little back-understanding of what critical race theory is. In the media, yes, it's now known as the understanding and the breaking down of the institutionalized racism that has submerged America, unfortunately, in the many categories from the education to the medical to the judicial systems. But from the beginning, critical race theory was created in 1897. And at first, it was created to understand why the civil rights movements were losing momentum. And then it transformed into trying to understand the institutionalized racism that was brought upon the people of color of America and the Black communities within America. And for anyone on the board who shares the same views of being against the critical race theory, I just, I want to know, what are you against when it comes to the critical race theory? It's not trying to make white people look bad or feel bad about being white. It's more about understanding the history. The board member had said, and I quote, "We want to produce critical thinking, but there is no critical thinking without accepting the critical reality of the people of color of the Black community." And especially when you are a member of the board and you are a member of the board that is within a diverse community, it's going to be quite difficult to try and say that and then also represent the people of color. So I'd like to leave off with that for that portion. And when it comes to the behavior of the board, it's really upsetting to see that kind of behavior from people who I want to look up to because it's something that I think is very important to know that your behavior is online, forever to see. It's not going to go anywhere because social media will never let you unlive it. But it is something that I think that is important for every member of the board to keep in mind, that this behavior, people who are like five, six, seven years old will see this and they will think that that kind of behavior is okay and we don't want to promote that. We want to keep it respectful, understanding. We all have our own views and we all come from different backgrounds, but I like to believe you all have the same goal, which is wanting to bring up this community and to bring up the schooling and the education. And that is something that needs to be kept in mind because frankly, as I said the last time I was here, when we are divided, there is nothing that is going to keep us together. And when you do that, sorry, just one last thing, if it's okay. But if you stay together and you actually listen to one another and be respectful of one another, you will achieve a lot more and that will be beneficial for not just you, but for the entire community. So, thank you.
That's all, I have signed up, all the people have signed up at the moment. So we'll move on to the superintendent.
Thank you, Board President Lewis. Good evening, board members and community, and those watching online. First, let me start out by saying that my heart goes out to my former community, Buffalo, New York. The horrific act of this past weekend has left a void in the hearts of many and has also shaken the city of Buffalo and every community of color across the state and nation. I would like to ask the board for a moment of silence for ten seconds to honor those who lost their life at the hands of a racist murderer this past weekend. Thank you. I'm trying to transition from those comments, but I know for many people that I know in my circles, it's just something that's been bothering a lot of us. And you heard some of the public comments tonight. It's something that's very real. Next, I would like to thank our community for voting in favor of the budget last night. It did pass at a seventy-eight percent approval. It's a testament to the hard work of my team, my leadership team, principals, community members, everyone who provided input as we developed the budget, the board who asked pointed questions, who made sure certain things were in the budget to make sure that students were getting increased social emotional support. I'm excited because I think this budget's going to allow us to continue the important work we've started since my arrival here in July and begin to strengthen that work ahead and, you know, help us pivot to sustainability moving forward. I also want to congratulate our current board president Kathy Lewis on being re-elected to the board. And I want to welcome Vivian Parsons to the board. She'll be sworn in for a three-year term at the July sixth board meeting. Most importantly, though, I want to appreciate all four of the candidates who ran. They expressed a strong interest in being on the school board. They dedicated time, effort, and hard work to running. Running for public office is not an easy task. It comes with extra scrutiny. And so with that, I do want to extend my gratitude to Kristen and Emily for their interest. And I'm pretty confident after talking to at least one of them that they'll be back because they want to do some good work for this community. Last week, I attended and spoke at the Schenectady Smart Transfer Early College High School Program Ceremony at SUNY Schenectady. It was fantastic. We had twenty-one of our high school seniors who were recognized. Seventeen of them already have an associate's college degree, which is huge. The remainder of them are working on finishing some last-minute credits. And the goal is that the rest of the group will have their associates by the summer. So that'll be twenty-one students here in Schenectady leaving with an associate's degree while also graduating in June with their high school diploma. So you talk about the power of education, the power of partnership with SUNY Schenectady. It's fantastic. These students started this program in the summer of their eighth grade year. So that's something that, you know, I don't take lightly because, you know, they're coming out of middle school right into high school before they, right into coursework, before they even started high school. This is a program that both I and Dr. Munro are committed to growing. You'll hear more about that when we share our redesign at the June first board meeting. And again, congratulations to those scholars and to their parents and to their uncles and to their aunts who supported them on that journey because it definitely takes a village. I also mentioned in my brief last week that Ron Dacia McPherson, who was a high school junior enrolled in the early college high school program, was the first student from student body to serve as a trustee for the college next year. So that is huge. She's a junior and she was, it's the first time ever that a high school student's been selected to be a, basically a college trustee. So we are excited for her and we will watch to see her do some great things. I'm also excited to share that our district is partnering with the Special Olympics for a special year-end event, you know, Unified Sports Day. It's going to be held on June twenty-first at ten a.m. at the Schenectady High School Football Field. This is targeted for our students with different abilities in grades K to five. They will have the opportunity to participate in a variety of events. We're going to be having some more information coming out, but I do want to bring that to the attention of the community and the board. Mark your calendars now.
What was that date again?
June twenty-first, ten a.m. We're accepting applications as well for the Summer Enrichment Program. The program is open to students currently attending pre-K all the way through eleventh grade. Families who should have been sent a form to complete through the parent portal. I know there may be some challenges with that. We really want you to use Infiniti Campus. If you do have issues, submit a Let's Talk, give us a call, and we will help you. Also, parent liaisons in each of the schools that we now have are also on standby to assist with registration if needed. As you know, pre-K lottery took place last week. We still have some open seats, so I just want to make sure we put that out there. And we're accepting applications for children who will be four years old on or before December first. That's really big. You're going to be four on or before December first. We have a spot for you in our pre-K program. The application is on our website. Parents can pick it up at the district office at any time or at any one of our schools. And you can drop them in the drop box outside of district office. And if you do need assistance, you can call 518-881-3405. Again, 518-881-3405. Last weekend, I was able to attend, I think, the second annual Scrabble Rama held by the Reading is Fun program. I want to thank Dr. Majid and his wife and the entire Reading is Fun program board. They put on a great event. I was an honorary DiCaprio that weekend. I was a part of the team, the Italian Stallions, which if anybody's ever met Mr. DiCaprio, Joe's father, very passionate. But I also got to join the Metzlers as well. So they were, I don't know the name of their team, but they also were having a great time as well. So that was really cool. Great cause, fundraising, just to give back to our kids through books and reading. This weekend coming up is William C. Kane's Family Fun Day. So if you have an opportunity and you want something to do on Saturday from eleven to three p.m. this Saturday, come and join us. It is going to be hot out, but I know they're going to have a lot of fun activities planned. Board members, you are welcome to encourage, swing by, attend. Again, just be mindful, it's going to be hot, so dress appropriately. Also, an important reminder, keep an eye out for many of the year-end activities. We did share a calendar with the board. There is a lot going on. It's an exciting time of the year. You know, stay engaged and there's plenty of things to do. So you can do something pretty much every night. Tonight, there was something at Hamilton, a spring fest that I couldn't make it to. There's also about twenty-two school days left of the school years. It's going to go fast, and so I will remind our scholars to finish strong. Enjoy this final ride if you're a senior, if you're currently still in school, going to be moving on to the next grade, just make sure you finish strong. Take those exams seriously because they will help you in terms of placements for the upcoming year. Lastly, an important reminder, there will be no school on Friday, May twenty-seventh, and on Monday, May thirtieth. This is for you to obviously recognize the Memorial Day holiday with your family and also take time to observe those who gave their ultimate sacrifice for this country with their life. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Erica?
Just, you know, kudos to the four candidates who run because when you decide to run, that's when you initially make the commitment to do this for three years and put in all the work. So just the act of committing to run to do this is admirable. And of course, congrats Kathy and to Vivian as well. And that's all I got tonight. Back to you, Kathy.
I really want you to have the handheld again.
No, we can't have it.
Yes, no, that needs to happen.
Anne?
Yeah, all I wanted to say was to thank the community for voting for the budget as well as the proposition. And congratulations to you, Kathy, and also to Ms. Parsons.
Thank you. Noelani?
So yes, I had just a few things. Super Intendant Soler commented on quite a few. Buffalo, I also wanted to just say that my thoughts and prayers go out to the family members and the community in a whole, as a whole. My daughter was thirteen minutes away from that attack and I did take that very personally. And knowing that people even from our own community were there was really, really difficult and hard. So I just, I do, I send my heartfelt thoughts and prayers to everyone there that experienced such a horrific and senseless event. I also wanted to recognize that it is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. So I did want to wish everyone a happy Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. I also wanted to comment in regards to the voting. You know, congratulations Kathy and Vivian Parsons on, you know, being elected to the board. I did want to say a personal apology to the community because I am a face on the board. I personally experienced a difficulty in the voting space yesterday. So for any of the community members that also had any sort of difficulty, you know, certainly not ideal and not what we, I think, would have wanted, but did want to say that I certainly do understand. And I think that, you know, just through communication, we can kind of correct some of the mishaps. And then finally, as you said, end of the year is here, so the calendar is busy. But I did want to call out the prom walk-in is June third at four forty-five. So looking forward to that as well as graduation for the high school, I believe, June twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Noelani. Jamaica?
Yes. Thank you for the reminder of graduation. I'm actually really excited to be able to go and be there and congratulate all of our graduating seniors. Thank you to everyone who came out to speak. I hear you. And I'm going to echo Noe and Anibal. Many of us are still processing and dealing with the racist attack that happened in Buffalo. To those who have friends and family or community in Buffalo, know that words will never be enough, but I do hope you find peace and comfort where you can. Schenectady's Durie AME Zion Church community grieved the loss of all, including one of their own members who was killed on that day. To those locally who are aching because this is yet another example of the racist white supremacy that plagues our communities, institutions, and systems, may we two find peace and comfort leaning on one another and holding space for one another. There are a few school and community events. Yesterday, Zoller had a field trip to my side to learn about the Erie Canal. I was glad because I had the opportunity to chaperone. That's right, I got to go on a field trip. Schenectady City School District Annual Art Exhibit is still at Viaport Mall in Rotterdam and will be there through Sunday, May twenty-second. So if you haven't gone yet, you still have a chance to go and see the kids' artwork. Tomorrow, Thursday, May nineteenth, Zaller Elementary has a concert that starts at nine a.m. So get there at eight forty-five. Also, in the community, at the Mount Pleasant Library on Crane Street, there's a community dinner and conversation that starts at five p.m. Saturday is a super busy day, in case no one knows. There is a Girls on the Run 5K at Central Park that begins at eight thirty. A number of our local girls participate and Malia is one of them. Then, because that's not enough running, there's a modified track meet at ten a.m. at Schenectady High School. So our elementary students will be running some more. Already mentioned Keene Elementary. And I know a number of us are looking forward to the dedication for Bill Ziskin that will be at three p.m. His achievements were greater than anything that has been written or could truly be expressed. He was a man who gave space, opportunity and inspiration to all children who entered his space. I still remember him telling me that he didn't like children when he cast Oriana in his first version of A Christmas Carol while she was still in elementary school. She played three different roles that year. He liked her then, even though he didn't like children. And he was impressed by her and he challenged her. I remember our reflection on that time when she was cast in the second version of A Christmas Carol, which is something Bill Ziskin didn't do. He didn't do the same play twice. But the second time, she was a high school student right here in this building. What Bill Ziskin did for our children was greater than lessons in a book, words in a play, props, lighting, film, although they did learn all of those things. He applied and lived diversity and inclusion. He saw our students and he saw them fully. There are not enough people like Bill Ziskin. And may the resolution that we do later in this building and this district live up to his legacy. I do want to mention that there's another community conversation later in the month, on Saturday, May twenty-eighth, that will be at the Bort Library. It will be a lunch from twelve to two. We are coming up on June, which is Pride Month, in honor of the nineteen sixty-nine Stonewall Riots in New York City, which was considered the tipping point for the gay liberation movement in the United States. Each June, Americans come together to celebrate LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Pride Month is a celebration and remembrance of protest against injustice and the need to keep moving forward to end the othering and discrimination against LGBTQIA+ community. And we actually, here in Schenectady, have a number of events that will happen. Starting on Saturday, June fourth, there will be the Schenectady Pride Festival at two thirty p.m. at Gateway Plaza. And so those are some of the community events and school events. And there's always so many that we'll keep mentioning as we come up on those days. And then I do have just one last statement. Yesterday was the, the school district elections for our budget, for our budget and representation on this board. We have another year of our school budget being passed. I am grateful for that, incredibly grateful. The other proposition was passed as well, which is good. That is what we wanted. And I'm, I'm always going to be honest, I am indeed disappointed with the other results. And more than disappointed, I am concerned about what this means for our school district and the larger community. Right-wing conservative groups at the behest of individuals like Rudy Giuliani and Liz Joy swept through our area with an agenda to roll back the progress that has been made here. I asked this board, what will become of anti-racism, inclusivity and belonging? Will there ever be an implementation of the diversity, equity and inclusion policy we passed last year? Will historical facts, health and wellness and science be further dismissed and diminished? A right-wing agenda which uses fear of change and misinformation. In the words of Frederick Douglass, "The limits of tyrants are prescribed by the endurance of those whom they oppose, those they oppress." I will not be tolerant of or complicit in lies, attacks, misinformation or dog whistle politics that demonize Black Lives Matter and the lived experiences of black people. I will continue to stay committed to talking to, listening to and advocating for all of our students and families. Today is no different than yesterday in the fight for equity, equality, justice and freedom for all of us. And we must keep fighting. Thank you.
Thank you Jamaica. Bernice?
Many of my comments were also mentioned, but I do want to first start with, there's an international night on May, uh, next Thursday. Next Thursday at MLK, I don't have the date here, from five to seven at MLK.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, thank you. So May twenty-sixth at MLK. I also would like to thank, it's not an easy decision to decide to be a board member. There's a lot involved in that decision. So I do thank all four candidates and I do congratulate Kathy and Vivian for being elected and re-elected to the board. I also want to give a big thank you to the community for voting on the budget. And I do want to mention, as part of some of the pieces of the budget that I think people are very happy about, there was a, an article that came out on April twenty-ninth, The Henchinger Report, and it was in the Times Union. And it specifically talked about the social workers in Schenectady. And it's a, it's a very good article. It's called A Day in Life of a Social Worker. So I'm only going to hit on some key points. But one of the things that it mentioned there is that our social, our district's social worker to student ratio is approximately one to one hundred and sixty students, well below the recommended one to, one, one, one to two fifty ratio. Then also, I did want to mention that Christie McCoy, who is the president of the Schoolwork Association of America, she praised the district for investing in the right resources to ensure students have the academic and mental health supports they need, particularly its low ratio of social workers to students. And it really highlighted three people, especially Mr. Nathaniel Wiley. So I just want to give a shout out, thank you for the two of our diversion social workers highlighted in the article. Again, Nathaniel Wiley and Jessica Saravino. And all the social workers that support, guide and empower our students. And I do want to shout out Assistant Superintendent of Students Support Services Andrea Tote for her dedication to this work. She was also featured in the article. And in the article, she mentioned that at the high school, for example, each court, her co-court of students has its own administrator, social worker and psychologist who work with the group of students for over four years. So I think it was a great article, again, April twenty-ninth, Times Union. It was a report called A Day in Life of the Social Worker. And it really highlights Mr. Nathaniel Wiley and his experience as a social worker. It was really, it was a very good article. So I just want to say kudos for that. And I do want to share my condolences and my prayers for Buffalo. I actually today was talking to several people I know in Buffalo in the Rochester area. And it's really, I mean, it's just, it's tremendous, it's horrible, it's horrific. And again, my prayers and condolences goes out to the community and families in Buffalo as well. Thank you.
Thank you Bernice. Prinsella?
I just echo everyone's condolences regarding Buffalo and that community, which is our community too. I mean, we're all connected. And that's it. Also, congratulations to the people who won the elections. And thank you everyone for coming out to vote.
Thank you Prinsella. I would like to mention that I had the opportunity today to attend the art show at Viaport. And I'm always impressed with the artwork of our students. I saw handmade paper books, I saw ceramics, I saw very colorful cityscapes and, and bugs and other things that elementary children draw. And so it's always fun to do that. I'm sorry I missed the opening reception on May ninth, but I was able to go view it today. Our thanks to the art teachers. I believe Robin Cross had a lot to do with setting that up. And, but the other art teachers had selected the works that are, were included in, from the various, from the various schools. So take the opportunity, if you can, to go see the artwork of the students. I would like to thank the community for supporting my reelection and hope to go forward. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to stand together and work together in the future. Thank you. Okay, we have Resolution Four, Requiring a Waiver of the Forty-eight Hour Rule With Regard to Approving the Certification of the Annual School District Board of Education Election and Budget Vote Held on May Seventeenth, Two Thousand Twenty-Two. May I have a motion to approve this waiver?
So moved Bernice?
Bernice, second?
Second.
Uh, Anne?
Oh, thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. We have the actual resolution itself approving the certification of the Annual School District Board of Education Election and Budget Vote Held on May Seventeenth. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved Bernice?
Second?
Second.
Prinsella? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries. We have a resolution approving the Two Thousand Twenty-Two, Two Thousand Twenty-Three Board of Education Meeting Schedule. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved Erica.
Erica, second? I'm sorry, Anne? Any discussion?
The dates, the years are wrong. If we can update that, it still reflects twenty-one and twenty-two versus twenty-two, twenty-three.
Definitely, definitely, we can amend that.
It was a long budget day for Martha.
Yes, it was.
Okay. All those in favor of the Board of Education Meeting Schedule, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. We have a resolution approving the placement of certain special education pupils. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved?
Noelani, second?
Second Erica.
Erica? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a resolution approving Consent Item Seven A One to Seven B Six concerning certain personnel actions. I'll accept a motion to approve these items.
So moved Bernice?
Bernice, second?
Second.
Prinsella? It's my recollection that we have to withdraw one.
Yes.
Motion, one.
She has abstained from one of the items.
Yes, and, and that person's name in there was Anne?
Well, what's that name?
The person's name?
Denise Dockles.
Denise Dockles, okay. I didn't remember her first name, sorry. Okay, so with the exception of Denise Dockles, all those in favor of these consent items, Seven A One to Seven B Six, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries. Then we have the approval of Ms. Dockles, Denise Dockles' action. May I have a motion to do that one?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
And that's Noelani and, and also Prinsella. Okay, so we, all those in favor of Denise Dockles' resolution concerning leave, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention?
Abstention.
Abstention, bye. Erica? Okay. We have a resolution approving an agreement between the Schenectady City School District and the Schenectady City School District Operations and Maintenance Unit Local One Thousand, Schenectady County Local Eight Eight Six. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved Bernice?
Second?
Noelani?
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries. We have our business items, a resolution awarding a contract as the result of a bid for summer enrichment transportation. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved?
Prinsella, second?
Second.
Anne? Any discussion? Glad to have the summer enrichment program and the buses to get them there. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. We have a resolution determining the proposed act, action as a type-two action for purpose of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act for building and site improvements for Schenectady City School District. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved Erica.
Erica, second?
Second.
Anne? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. We have a resolution naming the Black Box Theater and the John Sales School of Fine Arts in honor of William W. Ziskin. I'll accept a motion to approve these items. So moved, but Kathy, could we read this? Sure. Please do. Let's read it, do it after we have a second.
Second Jamaica.
Would you like to read it Anne?
No, because I'll cry.
Who's not going to cry?
Let me, let me get down, let me get down to it here and pull it up. I will read it. My microphone is on. We have a resolution naming the Black Box Theater and the John Sales School of Fine Arts in honor of William W. Ziskin. Whereas Mr. Ziskin served as an English and theater teacher at Linton and Schenectady High School for thirty years. And whereas Mr. Ziskin directed over seventy plays and musicals at the high school during his career and co-founded the Blue Roses Theater Company in nineteen ninety-eight. And whereas Mr. Ziskin cultivated a love of the theater arts in his students. And whereas Mr. Ziskin created summer programs in theater and film for students in the Schenectady City School District, such as Solving Shakespeare and the Blue Roses Theater Festival of Short Films. And whereas Mr. Ziskin partnered with Proctor's Theater in theater education initiatives and brought, brought the Blue Roses Theater production of Twelfth Night to the Proctor Stage in nineteen ninety-nine. And whereas Mr. Ziskin played an integral role in the John Sales School of Fine Arts, earning the John F. Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts National Schools of Distinction in Arts Education Award for their work during the two thousand seven, eight school year. And whereas dozens of Mr. Ziskin's students have pursued careers in the theater arts on stage, in film and on television. And whereas Mr. Ziskin also coached football during his time at the high school. And whereas he was a professional actor and a member of Actors Equity Association, which represents more than fifty-one thousand professional actors and stage managers nationwide. And whereas Mr. Ziskin performed in professional theaters throughout the capital region, such as Capitol Repertory Company and Saratoga Shakespeare Company. And whereas Mr. Ziskin, also a professional photographer, took pictures of every production of the Blue Roses Theater Company from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand seventeen, almost eighty total. And whereas over four hundred of his students, parents and colleagues nominated him for the Tony Award for Excellence in Theater Education. And whereas Mr. Ziskin helped design the Black Box Theater during the construction of the Fine Arts Wing of the John Sales School of Fine Arts. And whereas over five hundred students, parents and colleagues support this resolution to honor Mr. Ziskin's legacy by naming the theater after him. And whereas the Board of Education wants to honor Mr. Ziskin for his many contributions to the well-being of his students and the theater program. And whereas, according to District Policy Five Six Two Five, in order to recognize individuals who have attained achievements of extraordinary and lasting distinction, the Schenectady City School District will consider naming- and lasting distinction, the Schenectady City School District will consider naming buildings, programs, parts of buildings, or outdoor facilities on campus, and whereas this district policy requires that any such nominee, if an employee of the district shall have retired or left the employ of the district a minimum of five years before such a nomination, now therefore be it resolved as follows by the Board of Education of the City School District of the City of Schenectady. Effective December 24th, 2022, the Black Box Little Theater in the John Sales School of Fine Arts will be known as the William W. Ziskin Black Box Theater, and this resolution shall take effect immediately." Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that resolution carries, and we thank you for that. We would like to have Lea Depeche come forward at the moment. We have a frammable copy of the resolution for her, and she has some comments. Lea is the current theater director. A little haftai haftai out there.
Good evening. I know most of you already, I think, but in case we haven't met, my name's Lea Depeche, and I'm the current Blue Roses Theater Company Director and Theater Teacher here at the high school. I'm here tonight representing the Bill Ziskin Memorial Committee as well as the Blue Roses Theater Company. We would love to extend our sincerest gratitude to all of you on the Board of Education and Superintendent Soler and Ms. Morris for all of your hard work and everything you did to make this initiative possible for us around the renaming of the Black Box Theater for Bill Ziskin. We're thrilled that the resolution has moved forward, and we really, really appreciate all the work that was done to make this happen. I know a couple of you had students here that went through the program when Bill was around, so you know the impact he had on his students. Jamaica, you said it really beautifully, so I'm not going to try to say it any better, but he had such a huge impact on the students here and the larger Schenectady community. The current students in Blue Roses are aware of the Blue Roses Theater Company history. They're, they know Mr. Ziskin's name, and they're being taught the same principles that he valued: collaboration, leadership, humility, and professionalism. Again, thank you for all the time that you put in to make this happen tonight. I look forward to teaching in the William W. Ziskin Black Box Theater later this year, and I'd like to extend an invitation to all of you to join us this Saturday here at the auditorium at 3:00 PM for a celebration of Bill's life and career. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Anne, because I know that you really helped to push this forward, and it's really important. So thank you.
We have a second opportunity for any comments from board members, public, anything of note. If not, we will have an executive session called for the purpose of discussing the medical, financial credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation. I'll accept a motion to go into executive session.
So moved, Bernice?
Bernice, second?
Second.
Prinsella? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and that's at 7:54. Have a good evening, everyone. Please participate.